It's great to be here. Last night, we were in Perry County and we had a crowd roughly the same size. People are really enthusiastic about this and they have strong views and they want to talk about it. And that's what we're here to facilitate. But you know what? This is my job. I should be here. You chose to be here and I'm so grateful for that. You could be home fixing dinner, you could be out taking the dog for a walk, you could be helping your child with their homework, whatever you name it. But you came here because you care about this issue. So, thank you for that. Now, another thing, this is our 26th stop, 26th county. And one of the things that has really remained consistent is civility and openness to those that you may not agree with on an issue. You could be sitting next to somebody that feels very passionate about this issue pro or you could be somebody that feels very strongly against it. And I think in American politics today, we should spend more time around those than we might disagree with and hear about the other side. And I've never had to insist on civility, but I would just ask and remind you that if you hear something from one of our speakers that you really like or agree with, feel free to applaud and show your approval. But if you hear something that doesn't necessarily jive with your views, please, no booing, no jeering, no whoa, whoa, whoa. We want to create an environment where everyone feels secure to share their views freely without any kind of fear of being judged or made to feel uncomfortable. And let me just say, you've got three options tonight. You can, of course, join at the microphone and speak, or we have comment cards that have been passed out. The box is in the back of the room there in the chair. And then the other option is you can fill in the online form too. And so far, about 25,000 of your fellow Pennsylvanians have done just that. We collect and analyze every card, whether it's online or in person, because this is a critical issue. And finally, the last, you know, you're of course free to leave at any time, but at the end of the evening, I'm going to ask a series of three questions. And it's going to be, all those in favor of I, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. All those undecided, because we're here to document that. Because this is a completely transparent process. There are no right answers or no wrong answers. So, if somebody asks six months from now, "What was it like in Midland County? Where was the road?" People will be able to click on the video online and be able to see for themselves. You have the ultimate democratic opportunity to represent your views in a way that visually everybody can see. So, again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. And I'm also to be honored to be joined by one of your commissioners tonight.
I'd like to thank all you for coming out. It's nice that people who want to come and weigh in on this issue want to thank Lieutenant Governor for including us, including all counties across Pennsylvania. He could have chosen to do the traditional, "I'll do Harrisburg, I'll do Erie, I'll do Philadelphia, I'll do Pittsburgh." But he's letting every county weigh in on this issue and I applaud him for that. Thank you all for coming tonight.
With that introduction, let's get started. Please come up to the two microphones and we'll just go back and forth. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is James Ture. I'm a resident of Delville and I'm a resident of Midland County for nine years. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinions and my presentation this evening. And I'd like to preface my comments by stating that my presentation will be based on objective scientific study, experience of being around people who have traditionally smoked marijuana to my personal opinions. So, I'll start first with the American Lung Association, who indicates the health effects of marijuana are determined in large part by how it's consumed. Mainly it's smoke, but it also can be consumed replacing it in candy, brownies, capsules, or beverages. Carcinogens are released from marijuana combustion. Smoke from marijuana has been shown to contain many of the same toxins, irritants, and carcinogens as the background. It damages the lung, causing chronic bronchitis over long periods of use, and also including the cell lines of the large airways. And the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Institute through the University of Washington indicates that marijuana contains a significant amount of more carcinogens compared to quantity of unfiltered smoked tobacco. The American Cancer Society says marijuana is defined by the United States Drug Enforcement Administration as a Schedule I controlled substance. So, what this means is that if the states legalize recreational use of marijuana, technically it's still illegal under federal law. The Attorney General of the United States, if he or she wishes, can stop that activity in the state. Marijuana smoking and use lowers the user's control over movement, causes disorientation, and sometimes unpleasant thoughts and feelings of anxiety and paranoia. It also decreases motivation. The most compelling argument that I've researched was from an article in February of 2019 from Hillsdale College entitled, "Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana: Mental Illness and Violence," through Hillsdale College. The author is Alex Burnson, and it states, "Some governments have argued that legalized recreational use of marijuana is a low-risk way to raise tax revenue, reduce crime. However, that comes at a greater cost to the individual user in society. Top medical journals through scientific research show marijuana use can cause or worsen severe mental illness, especially psychosis. That means a break from reality."
Sir, sir, it's safe to assume that you're a strong count, right?
Pardon?
You're strongly against legalizing marijuana.
Yeah, can I finish?
Yeah, I just ask that we live in our comments for another 90 seconds.
Okay, so, I just am not in favor of this. Also, in today's Lewis Towne Sentinel, there was an article about marijuana, emergency room visits, crimes in Denver hospitals. And, you know, the governor says that he is trying to fight the opioid crisis. He said that's a Schedule I drug and he wants to take the necessary steps and actions to protect the health and safety of Pennsylvanians. And by legalizing marijuana, he's doing the total contrary to it. So, I'll stop my comments and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to say, Mr. Federman, thank you very much for stopping in and talking to us. My name is Kelly Carroll. I live in Midland County. I've been here for over 25 years. I moved here from the state of Texas. And I have to say, I'm strongly for it for the simple reason, I have seen the medical uses from it. And as a member of, known with myself for 24 years, one of the people that's fighting to get it legal on the medicinal side, then I'm all for it. But the main thing I look at is if we package it up and we sell it just like we do cigarettes every day, we'll get the country, the whole country out of debt, but four, five years from now. It's number one. But number two, as an avid smoker myself, and I'm somebody that, I go to work every day, I don't miss a day, I'm a certified worker pilot. And I don't miss a day, but I would rather run into somebody driving down the road that's smoking a joint, than somebody drinking a beer. And I would rather go out on the street and run into somebody smoking a pipe than I would somebody doing some other type of drug. Because somebody's smoking a joint, running into them, what they gonna do? They gonna stand there and laugh at you, you know? So, for me, I'd like to say I'm all for it. The gentleman took up a little bit of time, so I'm just gonna cut mine at that. But thank you very much for coming to see us serve here in our audience.
We're here to talk today about prohibition. I don't see very many people for the prohibition of alcohol anymore today, even though alcohol is considered to be a harder drug than marijuana. We have more deaths annually from overdosing on alcohol from drunk driving and everything. But we do not have a call to make alcohol illegal. But what we do understand is that the prohibition of alcohol did not work because of the negative repercussions of prohibition. We had an increase of violence due to the black market that the prohibition of alcohol created. We still had a usage of alcohol when it was illegal. Many of the same things still pertain to the prohibition of marijuana. People still use it regardless of it's legal or illegal. And the creation of this black market has created violence. People have to go to a drug dealer they may or may not know and into a sketchy situation. They're gonna use it regardless of it's legal or not. There are zero deaths this year, last year, the last decade that can be linked to marijuana Nowhere near as harmful as alcohol. Yet we are not calling today for alcohol to be made illegal.
Okay.
So, my point is, with the prohibition standpoint, we need to look at the individual liberty to make the choice whether to consume or not and to compare the health benefits of alcohol and marijuana. And it's clearly on one's own.
Okay, thank you. May I have the other floor?
And I'm all for the legalization of marijuana. I feel there are so many more positives to legalization. I have a hard time with the alcohol. Alcohol is definitely more deadly, but yet it's legal. And then you have marijuana, like he said, no one has ever overdosed for marijuana. No one will ever overdose for marijuana. I also believe that it will make a more peaceful world. There's a lot of violence and stuff from alcohol and the harder drugs. And I have a hard time with it being in the same category as heroin, because it's a Schedule I drug. It's not even close to heroin. I just believe it's the safest thing out there. You know, when you do smoke marijuana, you're not going out and getting in a car, you're, you know, you're just caught, you want to sit at home and watch TV. It's never gonna get you, let me say, maybe violent or anything above. And I'm just, I'm just all for it to be legalized. And I think those that don't, of the older generation, have to educate themselves more and maybe they'll understand, or us that do want it legalized, maybe they'll come to realize that what we're saying is the truth. So, I'm just all for it, guys.
Thank you so much. My name is Michelle and I am for the legalization of recreational marijuana. And I think that it's important to come to change the law. You have to look at the history of why it was illegal in the first place, why it's banned. And the whole thing goes back to, of course, Schedule I substance control back in the 1970s during Nixon. It was already proven that the rural drugs had no effect whatsoever. It was already proven by his counsel that the rural drugs was meant to segregate communities. And to this day, we have 53% of people arrested for marijuana. That's almost 5.8 million people for nonviolent crimes, most of them are not using drug pens. It hasn't concluded anything for us. The medical effects of marijuana outlived any other effects, including that of alcohol. I mean, that's gonna be the common thing you're gonna see is marijuana compared to alcohol. We have a moonshiner, so you know, now we have a pothead. So, it's all good. Right? We're not here to make a profit off the rent of a prison. People are not money. That's what this is about, with poor people in a jail, private corporized prisons, and they're for money. And their lives are being wasted and ruined by something that there's no evidence to see in the hard film. So, thank you so much for coming. If you're in a town, I appreciate it.
In the United States, or in any culture that aims to value individual freedom, I believe that a system of justice should rely on two fundamental ideals. The first, collect marijuana. This means that our laws will be built on something that applies to make some consensus or a general agreement. In the U.S., supportfully, the criminalization or legalization of recreational marijuana is higher than ever. Marijuana laws that may have once rested on a strong consensus no longer relate to a general agreement among citizens. A recent article showed that national support for recreational marijuana is now at 66% to the thirds of all Americans. I understand that there are many people who have negative ties to marijuana, so those shouldn't simply be ignored. But if there isn't a consensus or even the majority of the population that supports the continued criminalization of marijuana, our laws should be changed to uphold personal liberty and individual freedom. Secondarily, our legal system should be based on the very best information we have at our disposal. Our current laws are based on a system of schedules or categories that classify marijuana in the same group as heroin. It states that it is more addictive, more dangerous, and less medically useful than cocaine, methamphetamine, oxycodone, fentanyl, Adderall, and many other addictive and dangerous drugs. The problem with this system of schedules is that it has not been realigned with newer, more scientifically accurate information. Professional academic research continues to show that marijuana is less dangerous and more medically useful than we once thought. This system of schedules also allows for the wide distribution of substances known to be more dangerous and more addictive such as tobacco or alcohol. So, we allow for personal liberty as free choice when it comes to the sale of cigarettes, which has been for over 50 years repeatedly proven to cause deadly diseases. We allow for the wide distribution of alcohol despite the fact that roughly 40% of all violent crimes are related to alcohol. That's 3 million violent crimes per year. But marijuana is still considered too dangerous and too addictive and not medically useful enough to allow for personal liberty. Our current law fails to line up with those two fundamental principles. There is no broad consensus or general agreement among the population of this country or this state that supports the continued criminalization of marijuana. In addition, the marijuana laws that are currently on the books have not been updated with the most recent and best information that we have available to us. I'd ask that you would take these ideas under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm working at Long 68, I've lived here all my life, and I do, you know, both marijuana and alcohol. I'm assuming that the state is looking into this for a reason. I guess it's for money. And we can't, we can't put money above people's lives and futures. I don't see any little kids in here, but see, in my mind, that's where it's at. Because no matter if you say you're gonna control this stuff, it'll always be available, always. And it'll be, who has the best, who has the strongest, what, you know, how do you regulate that? We got some first responders here, the police, and they're the ones who set the laws and they're the ones that have the responsibility, they're the ones going out there and trying to enforce it. I don't want to add to all. My suggestion would be to tell Governor Wolf to stay firm, have a strong back, and don't stand for something, don't fall for anything. You know, my belief is, if God wanted us, number one, to drink, we have a still plug in our side, if you wanted to spell, there'd be a smoke pipe on our heads, like I did at Brookway's. So, from my perception is, I have a clean mind now. I used to, I used to do that stuff, and then somebody, I'm gonna get a little spirit from her, but I'm just, and explaining the, 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 the , the, 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 the,[1243.41] that's their problem, but I'm not, I think we're, you know, I think we have to think in the future. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, sir, you have the floor.
My name is Mike, uh, my name is Christian Diller. This is, this is all gonna fall kinda like he said, you know, the enforcement side of it. There's no true way of doing an intoxication test on them, like blood alcohol or anything. So it's gonna create issues for the police, and it's gonna create issues amongst the workplace, because it's still illegal under ocean in charols. Um, it's still illegal to buy a gun or own a gun in Puntermontes. Question eleven, illegal in a forty-four seventy-three states that the federal government doesn't recognize medicinal or recreational. So we're opening a can of worms, and you've already seen it, there's gun trafficking going on at the same time. Um, I just think this has all come out as a revenue thing in a gun trade. Um, I'm not for it, but I just think that this is all under a guise of gun trafficking.
Wait, sir, to clarify, you're in the middle, you don't have an opinion either way?
No, I really don't care either way, I've seen the medicinal work, and I've seen the recreational actually ruin people's lives. But I just think it's like, nobody's our alcohol, it's the person doing it that's gonna wreck their life and make it good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sam, yes, I didn't come here today prepared to say anything, but I did take exception to the lady that spoke a while ago, and says your generation needs to educate itself. We're the generation that lived through this fifty, sixties, and seventies, when, you know, marijuana was just how to, you know, hippies were smoking, and everybody was exposed, and all the professionals were calling it a gateway drug, gateway drug, gateway drug. And look at the drug problems we have today. You can't control anything. You can't control alcohol, you can't control pain medication. I took pain medication for years, and they took away from me because people were abusing it. I mean, they're gonna abuse it, they're gonna abuse it. And tonight, there's a misconception that we're doing, that the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana are the same thing. The medical marijuana has already passed, and I'm not saying...
Yes, sir.
Is that...
Yes, it did pass.
So, this is recreational, this younger generation has to feel good all the time. They get their feelings hurt about everything. Now, is this all gonna be regulated and taxed?
I'm not here to answer questions, sir, I'm just strictly here to hear what everyone has to say.
You don't have any answers then?
I, I don't, because we are just, you know, listening to her. There's no right or wrong answer.
Because that's where I'm coming from, from old film television, three or four weeks ago, saying we have to be a B-two state, because the states around us are doing this, and we can't let the revenue get away. But I'll bet you when it comes time, you're not gonna let these people grow their own. You're gonna want to regulate it and tax it. That's all I have to say.
Yes, my name is Martin Law, and I thought I was gonna stay on the front possibly of law, because I like blocking, you know. I think if, um, I'm not pro marijuana, I'm not anti marijuana, I think that if they legalize it, I think I would be allowed to build a good life for.
Hallelujah.
And legally. I believe, I think they are, you like dark jam. I don't like dark jam, I mean, they don't, I never had ease on me, but I don't think there's a purpose for it, because if people go that far, I think they obviously want the, whatever. That's all I can say about that.
Just one last question to confirm, sir, you're in the middle, you don't have an opinion?
I'm in the middle.
In the middle.
Whatever, I feel that the legislation is gonna do whatever they wanna do, for the majority of the people, but I hope it's the right decision. Because our president now gets a flag for everything he does, and, you know, I don't see the flag, that's all I can say.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, then you have the floor.
My name is Joan Lohn, uh, I don't have, I haven't made a decision one way or another, but I have a question about a couple of statements that were made early in the comments. Uh, somebody stated that, uh, nobody who, uh, uses marijuana is going to go out and, and for example, get in a car and drive, they're just going to, um, veg out at home and watch TV. Uh, is it really true that there haven't been any examples of people, uh, smoking and then going and driving, and driving and hair?
We always have.
Is that, is that true, that there aren't always...
There's not.
No, I'm asking seriously, I'm...
There's not been one charged, sir.
I, uh, no, I understand, so, so, I, I thought I heard you earlier, you don't have an opinion either way, man? Uh, okay, that's...
But, you know, I, I, I believe that there probably are times when people who use marijuana get in their cars, go out and get something to eat, and drive and hair, just like people who use alcohol do.
Thank you, man, okay. Sir, you have the floor?
Yeah, I've smoked for twenty-two years, and, uh, I use it for medical reasons. I checked a doctor and, uh, in state college. It is, um, fifty dollars a week, a hundred dollars for the consultation, that's three hundred dollars every month. And I get six, seven hundred dollars for my disability. And I'm disabled for my back and for mental issues. And I use marijuana for, to help with the pain in my back and for my mental issues. And I'm just, I have a guess, sir, as I said, I, I can't afford it, I, it's, you know, medical's too expensive. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thanks, sir.
My name is Steve, it's all ours. I have a medical marijuana patient, I'm also recovering heroin, uh, October 11th, that was called for me. Some of that help came from some people that are in this room. Uh, but there's methadone, it's baxin', that, that's what opioid addicts take with them. And it's expensive, you know, most of the stores are recovered. Uh, I was going free, some tax tablets a day, I started the medical marijuana, and I'm now down to one and a half tablets a day, no side effects whatsoever. I'm seriously, I'm all for it, it does, but just give me a chance, we were flamed. It was awful, and I'm ashamed to say that I was a part of it. And I've been through the programs in prison, and it's a joke, it really is, but this does work, just, we ought to give it a chance as a society. We really would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Gavin, and, um, I am against the legalization of marijuana, and I'm gonna be speaking from a school's perspective. So, say if marijuana's legalized, it becomes a normal household object, and some teenagers get a hold of it, they're at school, they're in the bathrooms, they're smoking marijuana, and then they go to, they go to their classroom, and they have the smell of it, kids around them get contact high, and they had, they have trouble focusing the whole class, and they just, like, they, they're not learning, and they's backed up. Sorry, I'm very nervous.
That's okay, I guess we never had testified before.
And, um, school offers, school, school systems are supposed to offer a safe learning environment, and I really don't find that safe if kids have the smell of marijuana on them, other kids around them are getting contact high, and that's, and it just becomes a normal object, like with the drooling epidemic. Kids were in bathrooms, they were drooling, and nobody prevented them from doing it, because nobody was checking book bags, they could easily be sneaked in, because they were very small. That's the same exact thing with a, with a, with a joint of marijuana, so they can just put it in their book bag, and it's very easy to take out, it's very easy to hide, and I highly doubt that a teacher will be able to see through a book bag and spot that some little, that some teenager has marijuana with them. And, um, I, I'm done, thank you very much.
My name is Sarah, I come out from Japan, I'm a dear of my life, I'm a miller. Um, I've had a lot of friends who, um, I'm actually for the support, how many guys need recreational marijuana? I've had a lot of friends who have done a lot of other different kinds of drugs, a lot worse than marijuana, there's a lot of heroin, meth, a lot of them, buster acting constantly, they just had shootings, I mean, just recently. I mean, our town's getting worse and worse and worse, and I can definitely see that marijuana could help a lot of different people around here. I have friends who have had cancer recently, they've been fighting it for the past couple of years, and their doctors are like, you know, what to do, they know how to help you, they, their doctors are able to, even though they couldn't get a marijuana card because of certain things the other do to get it, and the cost it takes to get a medical marijuana card, some people can't afford that. I mean, a lot of people have trouble paying their rent around here, how can you afford to get a marijuana card? You know, it should be recreational legal, it's up to them, it is not chemical. I mean, people get pharmaceuticals all the time, doctors push you guys, they take pills every day that are harmful for your body, have you guys ever looked at pill things, wonder pills, you guys take every single day? They are seriously dangerous. According to marijuana, that is not dangerous. If you make it recreational legal, or they can sell it in the store, that means it is grown properly, then it'll be where someone knows it's not laced with something, people who are doing it, you know, now they, like I said, but we heard someone say that it's sketchy, you have to go to a drug dealer, you have to buy it, if it's, you know, it could be laced with something that is more dangerous for other people to use. So why not make it recreational legal, where people can actually buy it, and it's in a safe environment for people to partake in it? I do believe it should be used, you know, to be able to grow it for your personal use. Um, I'm definitely for it, and I'm really grateful you guys can give us a chance to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Smolster, I live your whole life, I'm thirty-five, so, I've been here through, uh, around the second, third heroin epidemic, it's happened here, and I've had friends die from heroin. And, um, everybody is bringing up valid issues here tonight, and I wanted, I wanted to touch on all of mine now, but that's not possible, but the first thing I brought up was the marijuana issue, that's a code, and a protocol, because it's good for one of those that is not ever studied, it's been put there in a box, okay, and giving these other drugs like heroin and cocaine to useless painkillers, and to study, but weeds have taken out of that. Now, the kid who just talked about the school issues, I totally understand that, but I can tell you from going from school, kids, you're gonna learn to anybody, um, people are gonna have them on them, they're gonna smoke it around you, and you're gonna have to decide not to. Legalization brings the opportunity for people not to hide in the shadows. A lot of kids that I grew up with did heroin because it is water-sellable, or not fat-sellable, you can pass a test, it was in three days of doing heroin, between two weeks of this test, and a month, you smoke weed two weeks in a row, you'll fail this test for the month, and get the same penalties as if you were doing heroin. So it led kids just to do the safer alternative, because it was safer, because they didn't get in trouble. Um, and it did put hand in hand heroin, odd deals, as a pot deal, or had to go, do his thing, to make money and all, there's this new drug that makes unimaginable money, and now we have legalized fentanyl and subtext, which, nobody can see that, it's a supply and demand issue that we're dealing with, and heroin is a problem that we give subtext a solution for, and we're getting pot modeled and all that. Um, I just hope people can understand what drugs are, or they can be used for, I'm not saying that cannabis is not psychoactive, and that if somebody has mental issues, they might not, they might freak out, like the Colorado, I like to call that the big freak out, because no one's going in there dying, they're going in there scared and sad, because they're, they're tripping like they're on LSD, and they've never taken anything like that before. And they're not taught that in large amounts cannabis will cause these psychoactive things, they're taught that it's giggly, and veg out, and talking to deal with all these things.
Okay, good.
The education is what it's all about, and legalization and bringing it down from the schedule one is the first way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Tiffany, I'm all for it. Um, would you guys rather see needles laying around the streets every day for your children being picked up? I think if legalized, it would take out, people want to do heroin, people want to do coke, making crack, and then, I'm just tired walking around the street seeing needles later, I'd rather see rapids first than all the needles that I see. My husband, uh, uses the medicine, and when I first got with him, I, all I wanted to do was drink, I didn't want to smoke. But after being with him for eleven years, I'd rather have smoke than drink, I'd rather have smoke and turn into another drug, I don't, I even would, but I'd rather have seen him smoke than anything else. I just don't see what the big deal is, everybody wanting to be against it, it's helpful to plant, like Sarah, like she said, to plant, it was here, it was here for us to use.
God put the plant here, we didn't.
So...
Good, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think I can say, um, there's two sides of everything, I guess, moderation is, is, is something. I'm, I'm to the age where, uh, I was, I was born with a chemical imbalance, and I was born before antidepressants were available, and I've suffered with depression so bad in my life. And before antidepressants came out, marijuana was the only thing that would help me get away from my depression, it would just knock it away. And sometimes it didn't last that long, it would come back, but I was able to get that relief. Anybody, alcohol kills people every day, every single day. There's no, there's no comparison between an alcohol high and a ten eighty. I mean, alcohol can just put you down, throw up your soul, it's, it's, it's terrible, terrible, you can't get that way of going. But, you know, there may be an abuse thing, too, and I do know that, and I don't really wanna see a bunch of kids in school, you know, that's the right thing. But there's good and bad, and, uh, but putting anybody in jail for smoking marijuana is the biggest tragedy in the world. It should never happen, never, never happened. I don't know if anybody here's ever watched the CNN Sanjay Gupta specials about, uh, marijuana? They're, they're amazing. Now, they're talking about, but the main, the things that, there's five, five series, Dr. Sanjay Gupta, watch this, you would be amazed. But anyways, I, uh, alcohol is just so much, so, so, so much more dangerous, and drinking and driving is so much more dangerous, and there's, there's no comparison, and, uh, that's what I can say.
Thank you. All right, sir.
Thank you for being here, and my name is Steve, I'm sixty-two years old, I've been smoking fire since I was fifteen. I run chainsaws, I go to track, I drive cars, I dig holes, there's no, you know, I don't get depressed during that, I have three, I have two rods, six screws in my back, I've been crying pain all the time, went to a pain thing, needed like four pills a day, I don't really kind of, so I smoked weed in between, got too hot, I couldn't be honest, you know, what the fuck am I gonna do? I'm all for smoking marijuana. You know, I heard a lady who was saying, you know, I had to get through all these clinics and get the car into all that, I can't afford stuff like that, dude, I buy the car and go buy the lot, I spent, uh, six hundred bucks, I can go get a glass of weed on the street, keep my neck, just as good. And I don't take alcohol. And you heard about that, too, went up a highway for one time, we're on land, because I was drunk, I couldn't see, I just smoked all night wire, I hit nobody yet, said, I'm all for it, and I thank you.
Sir, do you think, do you think anyone, are you willing to speak? Okay, all right, you're up.
Thank you, uh, I am Stuver Hesse, local resident, lived here since nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, thank you for taking the time to come to our town this evening. Uh, I don't really have a problem with just the use of marijuana, I would, uh, not like it to be passed legally, my general consumption use, I think it's really just an issue, an easy source of revenue for the state, rather than you putting some money into the budget, you can actually, well, we get money elsewhere in our corporate budget, so I don't think it's a good source of, uh, revenue, and I really appreciate it, last.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, don't have any prepared remarks, but I wanted to, uh, speak on some of the things people are saying as far as us about to make marijuana available, it's been widely available to anyone who wants it since before nineteen sixty-nine, and I am one of those old people, uh, I have thousands of friends who have used recreational pot over the years, none of them has, it has not become a gateway drug for them to be doing heroin, coke, or anything. Uh, what isn't a gateway drug is alcohol. I'm an retired, I'm an retired high school teacher and a Commonwealth accountant, and the people I know are a wide spectrum, I mean, I know people that use recreational marijuana, there are police officers, teachers, accountants, attorneys, doctors, it goes across the spectrum of my friends, uh, and none of them has turned to hard drugs, but one of the top people, including my own nieces that are heroin addicts, uh, they told me that they were a part of drinking, and someone offered it to them, and they'd never have tried it if they had been sober. Uh, I haven't heard that problem with, with anyone that's doing recreational, uh, pot, and, um, the other thing is, I'd like to see it legalized, because right now, the people making money are growers in other countries, like Mexico and, and a lot of other countries, it could be our farmers here in Pennsylvania making money growing. People are being manufactured and products for sale, uh, including bakeries and factories and that kind of thing, putting people to work, and then it would be a great tax base. Uh, I'd rather see, uh, it regulated, so that there would be a product that you know what you're getting when you buy, it's not cut with something, uh, like rat poison and things, they just, you cut it, but now the, uh, the crooks that sell it and make the money going now, so I'd much rather see it legalized for that reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Uh, I'm either for or against it, because if they legalize my nighttime entertainment, then they leave it as it is my nighttime, so I'm for or against it, I think either way. I have done enough where you can see that it appears that the reason that we want to do this is to generate revenue, and I don't have an issue with that either, as long as people in Harrisburg understand that we would like to see some of that revenue make it back to the local municipalities. I really like the judge, I'm gonna do the, this, if we were sold the bill of goods, or the seed, that we would see property tax relief, if we legalized gambling, and I haven't seen any property tax relief, because I've seen it. Uh, we had, you know, the, the, the previous administration had gas tax, and additional gas tax put on to fix highways, I haven't seen any major improvement on the highways around here, except the bucket already funded with the missing link to, to state colleges. And now I read that the Turnpike Commission is broke, and last week, the group of engineers met with PennDOT and advised PennDOT that they don't have enough money going forward, and things are worse than PennDOT had ever for. So my only comment is, if we're gonna be sold bill goods, that it's being done to generate revenue, I want to see the revenue come back to the local municipalities, where it can be best used, and if it's being sold on the idea that we're gonna see property tax relief, I'd like to see the property tax relief. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Venus, um, I've been a resident of the county all of my life, I was actually probation officer for many years, and I currently teach criminal justice. Um, I hear people talking about revenue and all that, well, I think you need to look at another side, too, in cities, I've worked in the criminal justice system, I know how much money we are spending, uh, two thousand sixteen statistics, twenty-three thousand eight hundred forty-four marijuana-related arrests in this, in this state. We spend a thousand dollars to prosecute and supervise each one of those individuals. That's almost two million dollars, and, and, and I'm not a mathematician, but, uh, that's a lot of money. So, taking revenue out of it, how much more could we save if we didn't put these people into jail, introduce them to harder crimes, to harsher crimes that they could be, be committing? Um, legal or not legal, like the gentleman said, my life's not gonna change, okay, I can use it, not gonna use it, it's not for me, but I think that we have to look at saving money. That money could be spent on education, it could be spent on counseling, it could be spent on social services, um, early education, and growth, whatever else you wanna spend, spend it on. So, I thank you for coming here today and talking about some of this.
My name is Frank Parker, I've been a resident of this town since nineteen eighty-four. Um, I'm a dopey addict survivor, uh, on my way here, like, I can count how many drug accidents in this vicinity, how many people died in this area, like, and they keep pushing the same programs, the same rehabs, it's like, why not try something new? Like, why not try, I mean, I'm a medical marijuana patient, I got certified in August, my last month in the county was November fourteenth, no symptoms, I worked through with her all, and I'm still with me today.
Thank you for being here, I'm a professional medic, I'm a listener, and I'm probably the only health professional, pharmacist, license is a pencil, I have taken programs and my education for marijuana, I'll just kinda touch base on a few things up here. One, the issue with the controlled substance classification. The big problem that people don't recognize right now is, as a health professional, anybody who comes into the hospital or any other area who uses medical marijuana, all of our licenses do not allow us to even handle people's substances. We are class two to five, unless you're a research place in the country, which are very few in our country, you can't even handle marijuana. So in order to get rid of the schizophrenic situation we have created, unfortunately, due to medical marijuana being illegal, having legalized recreational marijuana in the country, we need to realize a couple of things. Pennsylvania needs to push for the initiative to have Congress declassify marijuana, or at least make it from class one to a class three, which is not a drug protection. We already have synthetics that are prescription, they're a class three, they're not a class one, so that's completely false. This is something that's been going on for generations. I don't think anybody in this room probably can't say it, but I'm with somebody who's addict and smokes marijuana, regardless of a profession they're in or wherever it is. So this is a long, ongoing issue, it's used medicinally, it's used religiously, it's used in a number of issues. We touched base, and of course, the entire spectrum of our community in the country comes down to this, and people have talked about alcohol, and they've mentioned the Bible, when the Bible... And people have talked about alcohol, and they've mentioned the Bible, and the Bible tells you you can drink also. I'm not going to touch base on that at all, but the real issue comes down to that, when we get down to looking at how we're going to try to regulate this. Apparently, we've got a medical marijuana that's been legalized in Pennsylvania. Suggestions could be to have those for recreational marijuana done the same way as other revivals have done in other states. They go into the same place, they come in, they have medical marijuana cafes, people go and do this. As far as addressing people who say we can or cannot control people because they're drunk or drunk driving, in other states, there are ways to still draw blood. Five nanograms in Colorado is what's used legally, and you will get prosecuted. If you drink, if you smoke, you have children who are, and you have an accident, you can get prosecuted. We still need to legalize it. So, we can't just bury our heads and pretend it was recreational. Those things will become truly shit that you can trust. So, some of the questions and the things that I think we should talk about is, would Pennsylvania actually adopt, or other legalized states, regulations that would regulate the way people would handle recreational marijuana, as in not going to a medical dispensary? In addition to that, would we be able to have independence? The gentleman here, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, it's expensive when you go to medical marijuana dispensers, if you grow it your own, because you cannot afford it. Then people can do that, and I do appreciate being able to bring the price down. And that's a whole other issue without the price issue, when you go even for medication. Some of the other issues about taxation, I'm sorry, I don't want to take too long, is the money that we can use, could be used for infrastructure, Angela Rose, we can use it also to use for research in the study of cannabinoids and the end of cannabinoid system. This is what we've been doing, so we've allowed people to research. All these years of ridiculous statutes that have been put on us, where this stuff is so evil, we wasn't studying it, we're now beginning to do it. So, as with other herbals, people are using things, and, you know, from a testicular type thing, you say, "No, we're sweet, that's great," because there are things that placebo they do work. But we need to do studies to see what really works. We're using them now with children, we're allowed to do that. The other issue that I have a problem with is, you know, we came out with some of the products that are now, they're going to get you legally high, although they made them a controlled substance. We retire our pants instead of allowing science and the people who are involved to do the research that we need to.
Okay, so we're really pushing it?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry. That was sensitive.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, for being here. I actually met you last year at the PA Cannabis Festival. My name is Ron Boyle. Somebody might have heard of the Iowa Greenbridge Society. I'm a hundred percent focused on patient care with cannabis, like everybody that's kind of passionate about it, my own story where I spent my entire life as unhealthy and lots of disease, and I use cannabis to help me. It's a long story, I'm not going to get into that, that's not what I'm here for. On the subject of legalization, you know, cannabis is a funny plant. It doesn't really care why you're using it, it's still going to give you benefits. Getting high is just, you know, as a side effect, like any other drug you can take, or alcohol. You know, we did write with the medicinal part of cannabis, but one big part that we're missing is, you know, preventative medicine. This stuff can really help a long way before people get cancer, before people develop disease. You know, a hundred years ago, this was in our diets, we had this in our bodies, the science about it is true, you know, regarding the immunogenic annoying system and how omicostasis works in the body. Not having that for a hundred years has really messed us up. Legalization provides the ability for people who want to, to self-medicate, to prevent disease. And regarding prices, yeah, I mean, that is an issue in pharmacy or in dispensaries all the time. And I deal with thousands of patients, and I'm a surgeon. I can't grow pot, I'm a farmer, and I couldn't grow it if my life depended on it. So, I want to go to a dispensary and buy it. I know it's a lab tested, I know what I'm getting. But, you know, legalization, the majority of the country wants it, and it's a plan. As far as regulating and taxation and all that, I honestly, I find it all kind of silly, because there's not one shred of evidence to put this plant where it's been the last eighty-five years. And it's a travesty to humanity, it has nothing to do about getting high. It has more to do with helping your body to be what it wants to be, to be healthy. You can look me up on Facebook and read my story, it's medically documented by my doctor, so I just encourage you to research further than the aspect of getting high.
My name is Jim. Glad to have you here tonight. I figured you could just tell roughly, Pittsburgh, Springfield, or something.
No, all sixty-seven, sir.
But, I think one of the things that concerns me a lot about kids, and if you go and read about that in Colorado, where kids have gotten candy that was laced, or add进去 replaced with marijuana, and some of them can replace the dying. So, things do have to be regulated, and like the gentleman, that had a minute. Things do have to do something, so that the people that are going to use medicinal marijuana needs to be able to take care of by the doctor's heel. And until you start to put a map, I think you better wait before you decide on that, because if you don't, you're going to pay the coddles, whether which you probably would want. Also, there's been a lot of people out in Colorado that have been hit with this kid because people on marijuana, they have been hit. And we need to look at that one, I can do it. Thank you.
Sir, are you, are you against recreational use?
Recreational, yes. Medical, no. Because I know that would be helpful.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is David Shafana. Just wanted to start off, thank you for being here, it's a small county, again, like the gentleman said.
They're all equally important, all sixty-seven.
Just wanted to note quickly the fiscal side of the current bill HB fifty. It's great to think of it in light and white terms of, it'd be great to get recreational marijuana passed. I believe it should be passed, I believe the benefits are outweighed the negatives, but it comes with a lot of other things. The main driver for this is revenue. In PA, we have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem, that's pretty clear. Our turn-based, we have a budget deficit of one point seven billion dollars. This is estimated to raise between five hundred and six hundred million. I just think that with the current bill HB fifty, it's currently listed a laundry list of certain special interest groups, to get that five hundred to six hundred million, I think for the sake of future generations of Pennsylvanians, we'd be better off and be more fiscally responsible to use the revenue from marijuana to reduce our budget deficit, and definitely passing on to our kids, instead of giving it to certain special interest groups. And I know the bill isn't completed yet, and still needs to be rounded out in the past, but we need to afford, we all keep our eyes to where the money is coming. Thank you.
My name is Eric Eady, and I'm a former pro. We've got to be last in the world on drugs, I mean, that's all we're interested in. Partly because of the demand for illegal drugs in the United States, but also partly because our drug companies have doctors who prescribe them, and some good people have got the opium, so now they're concerned now. But you made everything together. We're wasting millions of dollars prosecuting, arresting, punishing people for smoking marijuana or selling marijuana. Do you have to get with that the fact that legalization would decrease the worst human suffering in Mexico and Central America, where these things are now grown in largely by gangs? It would also, you know, create thousands of jobs in that way, in growing, distributing, and producing marijuana. That would be enough in itself, but not only that, but, you know, from what I've read recently, those places that have legalized marijuana, the use of opioids has actually decreased, and marijuana is being reduced. So, you know, I would say, let's legalize it, let's control it, let's make sure we control it tightly, let's tax the heck out of it, and let you do that money for social services, education, drug addiction, cancer, and all those things, thank you, we can do with that now.
Hi, my name is Keith Frank. I'm twenty-seven years old, and I just wanted to say that, let's see, I've, I've, I've read an article a couple years now, about a steel, a steel factory in Youngstown, Ohio. They started out at fifteen dollars an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour, and no high school diploma required. More than half of their applicants did not get the job because they could not pass the drug pass. I, I, I've been working since I was nineteen years old. I, I get up, I go to work every day, I work hard, and when I get home, I like to smoke. Some people like to go home and have a beer. I want to know why I should be demonized, because I, I have different preferences. I decide to go home, and I put something in my body that's going to stay there for thirty days, whereas, you know, take heroin, for example, that can be out of your system in a matter of days, less than a week. So, I, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we need to keep including THC on, on the drug handle. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Walter Sesterzky. I've been a resident of the county for seventy-six years.
Sir, can you be closer to the microphone?
Seventy-six years I've been from county. I spoke to my representative this morning, Harrisburg, who is opposed to this recreational marijuana. And I must say, this is not medicinal marijuana, whatever your opinion on that may be, it's not medicinal marijuana, this is recreational marijuana, is what is being talked about here. I believe the only reason that Harrisburg is presenting this issue is because of money. You want tax revenue. Harrisburg does not have a problem with tax revenue. You have a problem with spending. You're spending your money wrong, and we're giving you, so get out of line with what revenue you have. The gentleman spoke about an article, I have that article, it's a perfectly printed page, it was reported, it was a speech given by a very intellectual individual. And one of the things I have down here, I like to read, too. In a two oh seventeen speech calling for federal legalization, United States Senator Corey Booker stated that states that legalize marijuana are seeing a decrease in violent crimes. He was wrong. The first four states to legalize marijuana for recreational use were Colorado, and Washington in two oh four, and Alaska, and Oregon in two oh one five. Combined, those four states have about four hundred and fifty murders and thirty thousand three hundred aggravated assaults in two thirteen. Now, a result. Last year, they had almost six hundred and twenty murders and thirty-eight thousand aggravated assaults, an increase of thirty-seven percent of murders and twenty-five percent for aggravated assaults, far greater than the national increase, even after accounting for differences in population growth. Knowing exactly how much of the increase is related to cannabis is impossible without researching every crime. You have to read with that. But police reports, news stories, and arrest forms suggest a closely related case, for example, last September, police in Longmore, Colorado arrested Daniel Lopez for stabbing his brother Thomas to death as a neighbor watched. Daniel Lopez had been diagnosed with schizophrenia and was self-medicating with marijuana, according to an arrest report. I know that. I know this is only one case. You need to read a district report. If anyone from home says they've read this report, how do you possibly be in agreement with recreational marijuana is beyond me.
So, I could care less whether it's legalized or not, I just want to know if my schools affect my teachers, and if it's still falling under the back of policy.
So, are you for or against?
I don't care.
You don't care?
Just like I said, I want to know if my schools, whether or not it's going to affect my teachers, and how my learning is going to be. Thank you.
I'm Allison Fisher. I am the Human Services Director for the county, and I can stand here and give you statistics, and I can share anecdotal stories with you about how I assess families that I work with every single day. But I've also worked with the county for nearly twenty years, and so my experience is that the state is going to do what the state wants to do, and we're going to pay for it here at the county. And so, I'm not sure how many folks in this room realize that the only way the county has to pay for all the things the state tells us we have to do, and we have no choice in that matter, is your county property taxes. That's it, that's how we pay for these services. So, what I'd like to know, by show of hands, is how many people in this room are actually homeowners who pay the non-tax taxes? Okay, sir, at the end, when you take your vote, those are the only people who have a right to vote, because those are the people who are going to pay the tax.
My name is Brian Pauline. I was still there, I'm still alive, and I appreciate that. I totally agree with the preparation. The only part that I disagree with, written in these little call patients, I believe you should do that up to us patients, get back, prevent the medical bill first, then come back. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rick Cook. I've been here for seventy, almost seventy-one years, and I'm a retired teacher. I'm the next veteran during Vietnam era. I'm a program. I read about a program called Rick Storytellers, it's a drug and alcohol program in high percentage of schools. And if you've read the article in the Lewis Town paper, you need to read that if you have to work with the whole thing, but it's, it's a very good article. But in my Rick Storytellers, I tell stories. And what do you think I tell stories about? Drugs and alcohol. Nineteen sixty-six, I'm a student at Lewis Town High School, getting ready to graduate. Three of my friends and a new girl from New York City are skipping school last period of the day. I said, "Where are you guys going?" "We're going out back to smoke pot." I go, "What are you smoking a pot for?" And they said, "No, we're smoking weed." I said, "What are you smoking the weeds for?" Then they said, "No, it's marijuana." And I said, "What the heck's marijuana?" Well, the girl from New York City brought it. The three boys that was with them, Bobby, Roger, and John, they're all with us. They went on to better things. All the rest of the good drugs had, had, uh, killed you. Well, they're all dead today. One died by age thirty, one by age forty, and one was late in the forties, he looked like he was a hundred. No teeth, everything was pretty bad. In my years of teaching, I have numerous, numerous stories. One boy, they were out smoking pot one night and shooting deer. Three fifty-seven back him. He went to put the gun back underneath the seat, shot himself in the crotch, bled to death before he got to the hospital. Another boy was home from school one day, his brother was burning his pot, and he went on, he was brewing the cornfield. A boy went and got the shotgun, come out, he shot his brother. So, you're saying death doesn't occur from marijuana? And heck, it doesn't. A fag? I worked at a prison, fifty inmates on death row, they didn't get there just for the heck of it. I asked them, "How did you guys get here in the first place?" Started smoking pot back in the fifties and sixties, met other crimes. My last year of teaching, took our little kid to go to a party. Five of them, well, four of them didn't make it back, one got his head cut off. One got his head cut off. The other three got killed. Probably the other guy killed two. One survived. He's a vegetable today. I can walk on and tell you stories and stories and stories. And I do feel for people that have physical problems. In the service, I've pulled my back out carrying a guy. For fifty years now, I've had back problems. Once in a while, it comes back. Yeah, the last time they came back, I did take some opiates prescribed to me. I no longer take them because I deal with the pain every day. So I know the feeling of pain is something you go through. But I just hope, you know, if you could grow pot in your backyard, smoke it in your house and never leave your house, I can live with that. But if you come out to the drive, you run across my kids, my grandkids, and you kill one, I hope you're dead too because you will not need an attorney and you will not need a lawyer. I will prefer you to attorney. Thank you.
Why, I'm sorry. Why only question? Nicotine is a drug, is classified as a drug, but it's perfectly legal. Marijuana, it sometimes helps you do the same thing, makes you feel a little better. Okay? Why should marijuana be illegal and nicotine be perfectly legal? Makes no sense.
I'm Brandon. Almost seven years ago, we lost lots of trouble. Like I've been, plenty of trouble, depression, alcohol and stuff like that. Every single incident that occurred was under the influence of alcohol. Never under influence of marijuana. There's never been any trouble, any instances where it's made me get out of control. But with alcohol, I take one drop, one drink, and it puts me into a complete, like, place where I can't control myself. It's never been like that with marijuana. It's only one person. Though everybody's different. But my point is, like alcohol is legal and with all my diagnosis of like mental health history and stuff like that and all the trouble that I've been in, it's all been linked to alcohol. Never been arrested sober. Never been arrested under influence of marijuana. Only every single time that I've been put in handcuffs because I had a drink that led to another, led to another. Just saying, for one, not decriminalize marijuana like, she wants to make alcohol legal too. That's it, sorry.
Hi, my name is Liz. I moved to Midland County four years ago from Colorado. So I witnessed them go through medical and then turn to recreational. And I was just back there last month and I see how nice the schools are. Our community has their aid fund and has the kids outside and has committed this money back to the community. And I see the potential for it out there. I moved here to open a small business and I know that this is about money and medicine, but the benefits for this compared to opiates and the current forms of the system and just the fact that we don't have control of our own health system, our own bodies, our own medicine, having the recreational is just adding tax dollars to our community. And it's all about being a responsible adult. So we commit to being responsible adults. It shouldn't be against children. There's no sense, it was in school and I was in school and it wasn't legal then, so.
Good evening. My name is John. And I will just relay a story which I believe is true to you. And I am, to be clear, against the legalization of marijuana for recreational purposes. I think it was in the spring of twenty eighteen, a man and a girl spent the night enjoying alcohol and drugs at a viewpoint on top of Jack's Mountain. This is West Lewis Town and I have the directions here for you. In the early morning, they left the park, used the sign going down the mountain towards Belle Call, the truck overturned and she was thrown out of the truck and killed. He was not. The family maintains a memorial to her to this day on a curb where the truck overturned. I'm willing to take you there, not at taxpayer expense, and return you to where I picked it up anytime convenient to you. Do we really need more or easier access to recreational drugs of any sort in Pennsylvania? I don't think so. And if you wish to contact State Rep. John Hershey's local office, they'll give you all the newspaper articles pertaining to it. And their phone number is on here as well, if you want it. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
My name is David Hedman. One thing I wanted to talk about, the young child that was talked of contact ties. I am a Department of Transportation area related employee, meaning that I'm subject to constant drug and alcohol screening. And I can tell you from plenty of my research, you can basically be in a car as Dr. Clam bacon it up with the kids and six hours later, so there's not much of a threat at secondhand marijuana. The other thing I was thinking is bargaining a little thing. I'm thirty-nine years old, almost forty. I grew up in this town. Lost a friend to heroin use. I've watched another one of my great friends, two bad knees, chronic disease, fall into rampant opiate addiction caused by prescription drugs, oxycodones. Pulled the rug out from him. What ends up happening to him? He needs the oxes. What's he going to do? Can't smoke marijuana, right? It's illegal. What else is he going to do? So, I mean, that's more of a medical thing that's kind of been addressed, fortunately, but I say smoke would have been bad.
Good evening. Chris A, used to be the sheriff here in the county. And twenty-two years in this county, working for county government, started in the jail and watched the number of, right at the beginning, once this heroin epidemic could hit this county by the world and watched the number of lives that were destroyed or lost due to these hard, hard drugs. Now, looking at countries and or cities around the world, before the United States ever started talking about legalizing marijuana for medical and for recreational reasons, Spain comes to mind, Amsterdam, those countries that have either decriminalized or legalized marijuana saw a marked decrease in the use of hard drugs, cocaine, heroin. And if that's what it takes to get these people off these hard drugs, then I'm all for legalization of marijuana.
Got it before the wire here.
I am all for legalization of it just simply because I have some forty, fifty years of my life with friends, children, husbands, brothers that are all on marijuana and alcohol. I know there's no comparison, shouldn't be comparison between the alcohol and marijuana, but I've seen it. I've seen my son being alcoholic. I actually called the police on my son. I actually institutionized my son for alcohol. I'm glad he's alcohol free now. I see my friends go from alcohol to opiates. I've never seen someone go from marijuana as a gateway drug to heroin or anything like that. Any of mine, who have friends or family that I have, I've never seen it as a gateway drug. So, I mean, like I said, just as a parent watching it, if they drive a six pack of beer, they're not getting my car. But if I've seen them smoking a little bit, they're fine and, you know, you do what you need to do. But I see, just in my, a big difference between alcohol and marijuana. So I know it shouldn't be compared, but as to me, one to the other, the alcohol is years worse than me as far as those two drugs. But like I said, I've seen for forty years and I've never seen anyone turn anything any harder or had any issues, any, get arrested for anything serious or anything because they were smoking marijuana.
Good evening. Last two speakers here.
Hi, Paul Bright. I'm Ray T. over. I guess I'm on the border to like medical marijuana, I'm not sure of recreational. I'm going here to have, actually, it's a question for you and politicians. I have two family members that are police officers. I heard a lady here get up and say something about this. My two family members, day in and day out, deal with DUI under the influence of alcohol with pot also. This is a thing that I want to know because I also almost lost a family member to DUI. Now, if we legalize pot, is a guy going to smoke a joint and drink a beer and then go drive? What I want to know is the politicians going to deal with this situation? Because legalize it there. Now, if we legalize pot, is this going to make it any worse? Thank you.
My name is Mike Mason. I've been a resident all my life, pretty much from Lewis Town. I've been a pothead since I was fourteen. I was introduced at school in seventy-five. On and off a pothead, I'm on break now. But it helps people that have problems. I mean, the government had a patent in nineteen seventy-four that high straights tend to soil adjusted, kills cancer cells. Google it, you'll be amazed what the effect. But it's a hundred percent for pot. I mean, it helps the people. I mean, people who just smoke pot, whether it's legal or not, judges, lawyers, everyone. I mean, some people do, some people can function when they're high. I mean, I can't drink. I can smoke pot and I'm a pot, you know, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Midland County. Entirely civil conversation. And I want to thank you for giving up part of your evening and come out and participate. So I have a few questions left. So all those in favor of adult recreational cannabis, all those in favors, raise your hand, aye. Can you keep your hands raised so we may document that? All those in favor, ayes. The ayes, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All those opposed to adult use of marijuana in Pennsylvania recreational, opposed, noes. Please keep your hands up so we may document that. Aye, please, so we may document that. Okay, thank you. And finally, Midland County and other counties, but who's middle of the road? Who's unsure? Let's see the unsure. Please keep your hands up, aye, so we can document that. Unsure, undecided. Okay, all right. Remember, please put your comment card in the box in there and please consider weighing in online on the website too. Every opinion is analyzed and recorded. Thank you again. Good night.